Good evening and welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. During the public health emergency, we will be conducting our meetings virtually, and they will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We'll begin as we do every meeting with the pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on January 11th, 2021, and the special meeting of the mayor and council on January 13th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's a motion from Mr. Cavaci and a second from Ms. Gilbert. Without objection, approval of the minutes is ordered. We have two presentations to begin with this evening. The first will be the presentation of the Mayor's Cup with the downtown Christmas decorations. This is something we all look forward to. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, we will not be handing out the prizes here today during the meeting in the livestream, which will make the presentation a little lackluster, but I'm gonna do my best and read down the list. I think, even though the presentation of the awards might not quite be the same, I think City Westminster and people that came through it needed this more than ever. I think the decorations downtown were very nice this year. And again, I know we put our holiday decorations up a little early this year, and we still haven't taken them down. I think everyone needs a little extra cheer, so I want to thank everyone who participated and everyone who decorated. But I'm gonna start from the bottom of the list up. The funniest award goes to Rock Salt Grill. The best non-traditional, I think they've pretty much locked this down the last couple of years, goes to Ting. The best traditional goes to the Spa on West Main. The best business promotion goes to Lux Boutique. The best kid-friendly goes to Flowers by Evelyn. I think they've won that one a couple of times in a row now. And the overall, the best overall Mayor's Cup recipient goes to Flip Yours Fitness and Wellness. And I believe they are the reigning champion from last year. Both years, they've been very creative with their design. Last year, if anyone remembers, they had the, they turned their giant glass garage door into a fireplace. This time, it was a giant package of a big present, and it stood out just as, I don't know if you can top the fireplace, but I think the package was as close as you could get, and it was very neat. So it was good. It's always fun to do this every year, to drive around, walk around, and see all these. And this year, again, I think we needed it just a little bit more. So I believe we will be delivering these, you know, the awards sometime next week. So don't hold me to that. We'll make sure we get that done. I know we have some engraving to be done. It might be done already, but we will get that to everybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always a cheerful thing to be able to present those. And many thanks to all the businesses who were such great sports and participated. It was, as you said, a little bit of well-needed cheer and brightness in our downtown this past holiday. The next presentation will be our quarterly update from MAGIC, the Mid-Atlantic Gigabit Innovation Collaboratory. And we have Mr. Graham Dodge, the Executive Director of MAGIC, with us again. Mr. Dodge, thank you for joining us. I look forward to your update.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am Graham Dodge, the Executive Director of the Mid-Atlantic Gigabit Innovation Collaboratory. This is our second quarter progress report for the months of October, November, and December of 2020. For those of you who are unfamiliar with MAGIC, our strategic position in the Westminster community is as this hub of activity where we draw in students and workforce into our various programs, entrepreneurs and startups, investors and funding, industry volunteers and mentors, and we output economic development, workforce development, startup acceleration. And soon, and hopefully this summer, we will actually start coordinating Angel Investing syndication among some of the accredited investors in the region. Our vision for the city of Westminster is this, what we call Silicon Main Street. It is a technology-driven economic development plan for the city of Westminster, meant to reverse the flow of commuters, retain Generation Z for net positive job growth, creating a sandbox infrastructure for technology innovation, which hopefully makes the city more resilient to recessions, pandemics, and provides us more recognition throughout the state and beyond. The reason why we believe in this vision is because Westminster has all the same ingredients that were present in the early days of Silicon Valley, including towns like Mountain View and Palo Alto, where you have this low cost of living with a high quality of life, defense contractors, institutions of higher learning, all working together in concert to turn what was, in Mountain View case, a sleepy train station town at one point, into the innovation capital of the world. Part of that vision that has come into view is this new project we're calling the Autonomous Corridor Project. And it is meant to sort of be built on top of the gigabit fiber infrastructure that allows for this low-latency application of these smart city technologies, initially with autonomous shuttles. So we are going to be scheduling a ribbon-cutting ceremony sometime in the next quarter that will kick off the scanning of a route as part of our first phase to scan a route. Right now, it's being proposed, proposed as starting in Carroll Lutheran Village, coming up past Bogers and McDaniel, going across 140, back and forth a couple of times down Main Street and down 97 to, as far as Carroll Community College and the YMCA. So this ribbon-cutting ceremony is something that we will be looking at, scheduling with other politicians, state-level politicians to come out to Westminster for. It should be a big event. And we really want to execute this vision by promoting Silicon Main Street as the city's vision as well. We want to crystallize that into an executable plan that encompasses fiber, our advantages with our opportunity zones, how we can leverage Westminster Town Center Corporation for special projects, and of course, the Autonomous Corridor. We want to develop a reporting template with the city, you know, with the Economic Development Committee, so that not only are you tracking MAGIC's KPIs, key performance indicators, but we're also collectively tracking key performance indicators for the city, like tax revenue, property taxes, filings, that sort of thing, mean household income. So we'd love to figure out, work with the city on how we could start tracking those data, and then monitor and communicate those with quarterly updates, including this update. Speaking of which, the quarterly KPIs for MAGIC are as follows. These are the metrics that the city has asked us to track as a result of the city funding MAGIC. The number of sponsors participating in special events this past quarter, we had several special events. That number jumped up from the first quarter, from 1 to 14. We had, again, because of additional events, we had nearly six times the amount of revenue, up to 6,700 from sponsor revenue. Then we had, because of end of year, we had a lot of end-of-year giving from our stakeholders and board members, and that totaled $3,104. We applied for one grant, and we received two from previous applications, and that included a $10,000 grant from Carroll County. Actually, in last year, that was 7,500, so that went up. And then, in terms of multi-year awards, we did receive a Calvert Foundation grant, which you may have heard me talking about us having applied for that in the past, and we finally were awarded that grant for $30,000 for two years. Our volunteers among venture capitalists, startups, and tech companies also jumped up a little bit this past quarter just because of, by virtue of having more events and more activities for them to be, to volunteer in. So that doubled to 16. Number of outreach meetings held with Westminster-based business CEOs. This is primarily a function now of the One Million Cups program that we've brought to Westminster, and that was seven this past quarter. And those outside of Westminster, again, this is another impact of One Million Cups. We actually had more. We had eight. So that's us talking to those CEOs from outside the area, exposing them to information about Westminster. What a great community we have. So then we had four jobs we were able to attribute this past quarter that were facilitated by MAGIC and within the city of Westminster, including one of our own hires at MAGIC. We now have a new executive assistant named Gabrielle Rose. If you know State Delegate April Rose, that's her daughter. And then, two jobs that we were able to facilitate outside of the city. Number of conferences and events attended or hosted, we counted eight. And then, seven where we were actively promoting the Westminster Fiber Network or Ting. And then, we had four articles in the past quarter where we were featured, or MAGIC was featured, or our projects were featured. Some of the other accomplishments, we completed our Big Data Bootcamp. That was our inaugural Python Data Science Bootcamp. We had our second round of game development classes, this time with a secondary intermediate-level class. We had our ninth Capture the Flag event, all virtual. And then we had our Business Risks Conference, which was our first cybersecurity conference in partnership with Carroll Community College. We introduced 14 different startups to the One Million Cups Westminster community. Some of those are from outside the area, so they're learning about One Million Cups and Westminster at the same time. We rewarded the Calvert Foundation Carroll County's grant as well, as I mentioned. And this is really exciting. We were invited and then subsequently joined the Maryland Department of Transportation's Connected and Automated Vehicles Working Group. So this is a working group that they've set up to bring together different stakeholders in autonomy who are working on this, and you know, a handful of private companies in Maryland that are working on autonomous technologies, and then communities and other, you know, local agencies who are endeavoring on their own autonomous corridor projects. And I'm told that ours is one of the most furthest along and most ambitious. Here's a couple more photos of some of the events, again, you know, online events. That regression intuition is from our screenshot, is from our Big Data Bootcamp. We have the screenshot here. The other one at the top is from our game development class. It's one of our students' games that was designed. And then, just below that, actually, related to the game development class, we were able to introduce one of our students to a professional from Roblox. If you've heard of Roblox, maybe your kids play it, or you've heard of it. They're based in California. I happen to know some of the people there, and was able to introduce one of our students to them because he has over 148, at the last time I checked, thousand followers on Roblox, and is now earning a living developing games at 15 years old, and he's one of our students. So what's ahead for next quarter? Our Hackathon, we have our annual Hackathon. This year will be a slightly different format. In the past, it's been a three-day onsite program where we provide food and resources for all the students that come out for that. This year, it'll be a five-day program done virtually, sort of self-paced, and then with a live-streamed award ceremony at the end, which we are still determining where that will be. Originally, we were gonna have it at McDaniel, but they're not allowing any outside guests right now. So we're probably gonna do that at Carroll Community College. I have to talk to them about that. Our Cyber Jobs Program, this is our USDA-funded program. We have put literature together for that, and we're getting ready to launch that as a paid internship program that will promote to local businesses to help Carroll County students get real-world experience in cybersecurity. We are designing, redesigning our website. So if you think our website's really confusing now, it's gonna get a whole lot better and more comprehensive soon. And we'll have more One Million Cups meetings. We've got another one coming up this Wednesday, in fact. If you haven't joined yet, you should check it out. We have Startup Portal on 140 is presenting. And a local venture capitalist named Chris College, he is gonna be doing a fireside chat with me about his venture fund, TCP Venture Capital, which is Maryland's most active venture fund, according to CB Insights. And then, we are gonna be planning, hopefully, our Autonomous Corridor ribbon-cutting ceremony, and that will be tentatively sometime, you know, maybe into the third quarter or fourth quarter, even if we, depending on politicians' schedules. We are aiming high and trying to see if we can get the governor out here for that as well. And that's my quarterly report.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Dodge. It's very informative, as always. You've got a lot of exciting things going on. And it's really great to have MAGIC, you know, leading the charge to make all these things happen in our community. And it's great to see that there are so many ways to take advantage of the Westminster Fiber Network, which of course is the underpinning infrastructure that makes all this possible. So thanks again for a great report. Are there any questions for Mr. Dodge?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
More comment than a question. Just wanted to say, great work, Mr. Dodge. I've been thrilled since the day you got here, and it just keeps getting better. You know, the numbers look good. It's wonderful getting that Cowheart Grant. That's, I mean, that's a nice feather in your cap. You know, they are well-known and, you know, some, I don't want to say they're picky, but they don't just give money away for no reason. So obviously, they see something that they like, and we're appreciative of that. But I tell you, this autonomous vehicle thing is really exciting. I think it's just cool. It's funny, I have five children that I know most of you know, and my youngest son is 18. And he just isn't interested in driving. He has a vehicle that sits in front of our house that's his, that he chooses just not to drive. He's just not interested in it, and I've noticed that a lot of his friends are the same way. So I think, once again, here we are, little old Westminster getting out in front of things. And I think it's awesome. I think it's really exciting, and I just wanted to say kudos to you and your board and everybody else who's involved. It's just, it's really good to see, and you're doing good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Dehoff.
I also want to echo Mr. Cavaci's remarks. I really appreciated the presentation, and I'm also really excited about the autonomous vehicle project because I run across a lot of citizens that don't drive, and they live in downtown Westminster. But I think that's gonna be really exciting. Mr. President, if it's okay with you, could we have a PDF of this incorporated in the minutes by reference, please?
Mr. Dodge, if you could please share that with the city clerk, and we will ask her to incorporate it into the minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for Mr. Dodge? Okay, Mr. Dodge, thanks very much for your time this evening, and we'll look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care. All right, we'll move back on to the agenda, and the next item is a public hearing. Public hearings in the city of Westminster are presided over by the mayor, so I will turn the meeting over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Charter Amendment Resolution Number 20-15, a Charter Amendment Resolution of the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Westminster concerning the single-subject elections to amend Section 3 qualifications for the election of mayor and common council, notification to those elected in Section 5.1 absentee registration and registration of ballots for the physically disabled voters and others, and to repeal Section 3.1 absentee registration and reregistration and ballot for members of armed forces, Section 4 Board of Registration of Voters, Appointment and Term of Office, and Section 5, same form and procedure for registration of voters, cancellation of registration. Ms. Socksey.
Thank you. So on December 21st, 2020, the Mayor and Common Council adopted ordinance number 931, amending Chapter 14 for the elections. The proposed City Charter Amendment Resolution Number 20-15 would implement, sorry, implement the housekeeping items and other amendments reflected in adopted ordinance number 931, including the transfer of the provisions for the distribution of absentee ballots from the city charter to the city code. Resolution Number 20-15 was introduced by the Council on December 14th, 2020. As required, staff scheduled a public hearing concerning Resolution Number 20-15 so that the city residents and other interested parties had the opportunity to comment on the proposed Charter Amendment Resolution Number 20-15. As of 4:30 PM on January 8th, 2021, no public correspondence was received regarding Resolution Number 20-15. I would like to note that if the Common Council adopts the resolution, it would be effective 50 days after the adoption if no referendum petition is filed.
Okay. We did not receive any public comments for this. Is anybody on the council have any need to say or have any questions for Mrs. Socksey? Okay. Well, then, we will go ahead and wrap up the public hearing. Can you close it up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on now to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar this evening. Now, I have a motion to approve the consent calendar. But a motion by Mr. Dehoff?
Second.
Is there, the second by Mr. Cavaci. Is there any further discussion? Well, here, actually, we'll just move on to vote. All is in favor of the consent calendar. Please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it. The ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor, what do you have to share with us this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, well, we're getting ready to start the budget process, which will take about six months as usual. And we're in the middle of some recruiting processes, as everybody knows, but I won't drone on about any of that. I did want to mention something that's going on in the city that I think is positive. It is something I am part of, and it's been happening for a couple of months now. But I wanted to make it, you know, make it known so that more people were aware of the opportunity. But there's a group that was started, spearheaded by Josh Ambrose. He's on a couple of our commissions, is currently at McDaniel College as a dean. And some of you may have seen this. It was in the paper sometime in the last couple of days. It's a group that he started called Hey Westminster. And again, disclosure, I'm one of the trustees, one of the first members. But the reason I want to get it out there and I want everyone to share it is, what we're doing is, we are offering basically like prize money to kind of an organization that deserves it. And it's not, it's not just going to be nonprofits, although our first recipient was Together We Own It in Westminster. I don't know if the second recipient has been publicly announced yet, so I won't give it away. But it is, it's a local business that's brand-new that's going in. And essentially, it's an opportunity for anybody that's doing something interesting in Westminster, again, whether it's a nonprofit or a business, or maybe something I haven't even thought of. You can apply for what you want to use the money for, and we're giving out these like $1,000 per month micro grants. So it's, so basically, if you're a small business or an organization like that, you can apply through the website, which is heywestminster.com. And the group of trustees selects the winner for that month. We show up, give you $1,000 toward the project that you said it's gonna go toward if you won. And no strings attached, we're just trying to make some cool things happen in Westminster and give some people, some people the edge that may not have had it, especially during this tough time. So it's a cool project, spearheaded again by Josh Ambrose, but it's heywestminster.com. Let people know if there's anyone out there doing something cool, or you think, you know, they're trying to enhance their business or their, or their organization or their nonprofit, and they can use a little help. Let them know to go there and apply. And that's it, Mr. President.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if we have anything to update the public on for the COVID-19 pandemic, which of course is still going on, and cases continue to be very troubling in the state. I do know that vaccines are now available for certain groups, and I, you know, hopefully, anybody who is eligible is signing up for those and getting them. And I know there are now a couple of sites in Westminster where that's possible. So, you know, on behalf of the city, please go out and get your shot and, you know, help keep us all safe and help us end this thing. Ms. Matthews, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, President Pecker. I think the only thing Information Staff was gonna share is the information you already provided, which is the Health Department is continuing to facilitate vaccinations in the community.
And the best way to find out is to go to their website, isn't that right?
That's correct.
So yeah, if you go to the Carroll County Health Department's website, there's information on how to sign up and where vaccines are available. So please take advantage of that information there. All right, thank you, Ms. Matthews. Move on now to reports from standing committees. Mr. Dehoff, anything to share for the Arts Council?
We had a meeting, I think it was last week, and a number of topics were discussed about, you know, just trying to keep moving arts and culture forward in the city of Westminster in the middle of the pandemic. And then, we also did touch upon the mural project on the Diffin-Doll Lot. Maybe at a later point in time, Director Gruber might have a little bit more information on that. There's not a lot to report right now. We're just in the preliminary stages of Ms. Gruber putting together some research as to how it is that we want to move forward with that mural project. And I'm really excited about that. That'll be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dehoff. We'll look forward to hearing more about the mural. I think that's an interesting project. Mr. Yingling could not be with us this evening, so we won't have a report for the Economic and Community Development Committee. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I will just say, as the mayor mentioned, that the budget preparation is beginning. The committee will be starting to work with the staff on that to oversee that process. If anybody has any questions, please let us know. We'll be sharing a schedule of how all that's going to transpire with all of you very soon, so that you all can keep track of where we are in that process. Ms. Gilbert, would you like to have, report anything for the Personnel Committee?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. President. I kind of have a somewhat lengthy report. So my apologies for some of the length, but the, tonight, as far as the personnel report, the consent calendar for tonight's meeting included two items that the Personnel Committee discussed at its January 22nd meeting. Agenda Item 5, the city's current annual leave schedule, provided for a lower rate of accrual in the employee's first six months of employment. The result, this results in newly hired staff earning a little less than the customary two weeks' worth of leave in their first year employment with the city. So staff recommended that the city modify the city's annual leave schedule by eliminating the lower accrual rate. So that was the first agenda item, and the second agenda item, 5, in order to comply with the Maryland Healthy Working Families Act, we needed to revise our sick leave policy for our benefited staff. So we took care of that with Agenda Item 5. With those items being passed and being completed this evening, the committee also discussed that the city has retained Evergreen to conduct an external market surveying to make sure our pay structure is still market-competitive. The firm will be also assisting the city with coming up with the employee compensation package for fiscal year 2022. In addition, we also talked about the expiration of the COVID-19 leave benefits that were mandated in 2020 by the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. These benefits were not extended by the CAA, so, which was signed into law on December 27th. The qualifying reasons for leave, not that really we want to get into, but they were all based on federal, state, and local quarantines, the isolation, being advised about a healthcare provider to self-quarantine if you're experiencing COVID-19 symptoms, if you have a medical diagnosis, if your family has been subject to being in contact with someone with COVID-19, or if you're caring for a child whose school or place of care is closed as a result of COVID-19, or if you're experiencing any other substantially similar condition specified by the Secretary of Health and Human Services. So the Personnel Committee recommended that the city voluntarily extend and mirror the FF-CRA benefits through July 31st of 2021. So the Personnel Committee recommended that the city voluntarily extend and mirror the F F C R A benefits through July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one, retroactive to January first, when these benefits did um, expire. The thought behind this is that we would encourage and assist our employees and their families as they themselves or their families become exposed to COVID or are diagnosed with COVID. Um, this will allow them time to safely recover and quarantine without worry of not being paid. COVID nineteen is still a huge concern, and we just want to encourage a safe workplace. So I'm asking the mayor and the council colleagues here this evening to approve the previous recommendation. I just briefly went over um, regarding the extension of benefits. Anything you want to add, Ms. Um, Ms. Matthews?
No, I think you covered all the bases, Councilmember Gilbert.
Any questions?
No. Thank, Ms. Gilbert, thank you so much. That was a very uh, very thorough report. We appreciate the Personnel Committee working with city staff and going into all that in such detail. That was uh, that's very helpful. Thank you very much. Mr. Cavaci, would you have a report for the Public Safety Committee?
Actually, uh, other than just welcoming the major, I saw that he's on, and I guess he's going to be joining us this evening and glad that he's on board, already hearing good things about what he's doing. No, it's been very quiet, so uh, I'm, I'm glad not to have much of a report. That's not always a bad thing when it comes to public safety.
No, indeed. Major, welcome. Nice to see you. Public, uh, next is Public Works Committee, Mr. Again, Mr. Yingling is not with us tonight, so we don't have a report there. Uh, Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff?
Um, we had a really good meeting with uh, the second meeting, the second meeting for the um, the Advisory Board. I'm really excited about the board. It was a really, it was a great meeting. The board um, decided, the Advisory Board decided to have uh, Jessica Laird uh, to be the Chair of the Committee, and we're all excited about her leadership um, in that role. Um, and um, I think we can look forward to a lot of exciting things um, out of the uh, Wreckin Parks Advisory Board. And uh, we'll look forward to uh, getting uh, Mr. Cavaci and, and Ms. Gilbert involved in that in the future because um, uh, Mr. Cavaci is still the dean of the Recreation and Parks Boards uh, in, in, in the Carroll County Westminster area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Um, so I neglected, um, Mrs. Gilbert is part of Ms. Gilbert's report. It wasn't on the agenda as a uh, action item, but I think we do need to take a vote on the committee's recommendation on the COVID leave. So uh, we'll take that as a motion from Ms. Gilbert. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a second.
I was going to bring that up under Council Comments and Discussion, Mr. President, so I'm glad you caught it.
Sure thing. Well, I, I didn't catch it. Ms. Ms. Gilbert was making faces at me, and Ms. Matthews texted me, so uh, you know, thanks to both of them for uh, for keeping us straight here. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it. The ayes have it. And uh, you know, the recommendation is adopted. Thank you for uh, making sure we did that tonight. And uh, I think uh, that takes to the Technology Committee. I don't have any report uh, you know, there this evening. Mr. Mayor, unless you have anything you wanted to share on that front?
Uh, no, no, sir.
Alright, very good. Thanks. Alright, so we'll move on now to Council Comments and Discussion. Uh, Mr. Cavaci, anything that else you'd like to share that uh, wasn't covered under your committee reports?
No, I'm going to be very quiet this evening.
Alright, very good. Uh, Mr. Dayhoff?
I wanted to add that um, in addition to the um, the Health Department, uh, Life Bridge Hospital is doing a really good job of um, of um, providing a sign up for the vaccine. And we want to certainly encourage um, everyone uh, to go out and get that vaccine as quickly as possible, as soon as it's available. Uh, because the, the sooner we're all vaccinated, the sooner we can open up the restaurants and, and meet in person. And and I, I think that's, I think that's all good. And we also really ought to publicly acknowledge all the hard work that the Health Department is doing. They're working a lot of really, really long hours, and uh, they're getting a lot of feedback, and they're getting a lot of help. And uh, I want to light a candle at church for them. So um, thank you. I think that'll be my report.
I thank you. Uh, Ms. Gilbert?
Um, I'm gonna follow up on the uh, the COVID nineteen vaccination. Um, I believe our local giant is a third location that um, you will begin to be able to obtain your vaccination. I'm not sure um, if it is ready today, but I know that um, with the Carroll County Health Department, they are now listed on their website as a location, so I'll add that as a resource. And just a reminder that this Wednesday, for anybody who wants public input, um, there will be more public input regarding the Wakefield Valley park development area um, at um, the Carroll County Arts Center. So I'll let Abby kind of further work on that as we get to the um, uh, the piece where we have the de- the departmental reports. Other than that, that's it.
Alright, thank you very much. Right. Move on now to ordinances and resolutions. We have one um, for adoption this evening. The mayor conducted the public hearing earlier. This is for adoption of Charter Amendment Resolution Number twenty dash fifteen, a Charter Amendment Resolution of the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Westminster concerning the single-subject elections to amend Section Three, Qualifications for an Election of Mayor and Common Council, Notification to Those Elected, and Section Five Point One, Absentee Registration and Registration and Ballots for Physically Disabled Voters and Others, and to repeal Section Three Point One, Absentee Registration and Re-registration and Ballot for Members of Armed Forces, Section Four, Board of Registration of Voters, Appointment and Term of Office, and Section Five, same, Form and Procedure for Registration of Voters, Cancellation of Registration. Uh, Ms. Viskoski, anything else that uh, we need to uh, uh, talk about on this?
No, there is nothing more.
Okay. Let me see if I'm just taking a look here. Uh, twelfth resolution, um, is, may I have a motion uh, for adoption?
Mr. President, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number twenty dash fifteen.
I'll second.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. President, one other thing.
Yes.
I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but when it comes to a charter amendment, do we need a super majority for that? Does that require four?
I don't believe so. Does it, uh, Ms. Levin?
No, a, a Charter Amendment Resolution, except for the requirements of the hearing and, and that's, and the publication, it gets adopted in the ordinary course, just like it.
I couldn't remember. It's been a while since we've done a charter amendment. Thank you.
It has been, yes.
I was only going to suggest that you vote. That's the only reason, Mr. President.
Right. Well, thank you. And uh, I'd just like to note, although um, ballots, the word ballots is misspelled in the uh, agenda item. It's, it's, I think, I think it's correct in the resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, so I think we're okay there. Alright, is there any discussion on this item? I'm sorry, we had a motion by Mr. Cavaci and a second by Ms. Gilbert, I think.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you all very much.
Yeah.
Move on now to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business of which I am aware at this time. Uh, so we will move on to new business. The only item under new business is Warner Construction Change Order Number Twenty-two. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you, President Peckerro. The scope of work involved in change order number twenty-two is necessary to conceal fiberglass insulation that is scheduled to be installed behind the new metal composite panels at the top of the new curtain wall system and stair number two. This contract modification is for the additional framing, gypsum wallboard, and painting that is not, that was not included in the original design. Change order number twenty-two has an associated cost of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. And I would note, it would not change the contract time for completion, which is currently February fourth. Um, I did also want to call to your attention that included in the staff memo is a um, summary of all the change orders that you have approved to date. Um, and with that, staff would recommend that the city authorize Warner Construction to perform the work encompassed by change order number twenty-two. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Alright, thank you. Let's uh, do this in regular order. You got a motion, we have a motion uh, to approve the change order?
I'll move, Mr. President.
Been a motion by Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Gilbert. Alright, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Matthews or any discussion? Uh, alright, thank you. Um, how are we doing on this, Ms. Matthews? Uh, and do we um, anticipate any uh, you know, any more significant changes or?
I don't believe so. Warner Construction is moving right along. We had a progress meeting um, last Tuesday morning. Um, based on the schedule they presented, it's going to be tight, but they're still moving ahead to substantial completion on February fourth.
Okay, what's our, what's our move-in date?
Uh, I will be walking through the building um, with Connie Kumar from Gant Burnett and Representative Duron uh, next Tuesday morning, uh, just kind of start nailing down the particulars of the furniture delivery. Um, as of now, the scheduled date for the furniture package to be delivered is at the end of February, so we're probably looking at a move-in date of early March.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
Do you think um, maybe we could, once the furniture's in, if we could schedule a uh, you know, I don't know how that would work with the Open Meetings Act, if we're all together. I guess if we're not discussing city business and just touring the facility, I think we're safe. But I certainly would love an opportunity to kind of go through it um, at some point before the movement occurs, and I'm sure my colleagues and the mayor probably would too. Maybe we could schedule something so you don't have to do it repeatedly, where we could just all go together and just agree that we won't discuss any city business during the tour.
I think that's a great idea. Ms. Levin, will we be uh, okay if we try that?
Yeah, that's fine. I think technically you're not forming a legislative, performing legislative function at that um, point in time, so I'm, I'm not sure that the Open Meetings Act would generally, like, it would fall within the scope. Um, but I am very pleased naturally to hear you particularly affirm that you will not be in a meeting.
You have trained us well, Ms. Levin.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
I think it's a great idea, Ms. Matthews, if uh, we can find a time to arrange something like that. I think we, you know, I think probably we'd all be interested in taking a look, so.
We'd be happy to do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Won't we be having a ribbon cutting? We should, uh, we could probably knock it all out in one um, one fell swoop.
Uh, I want to, I want to look at it before then.
Well, we could do both. You know, we certainly are going to have a ribbon cutting and uh, all that, so.
If Chairman Dayhoff wants to check it out and make sure it's up to snuff before he gets his picture taken in front of it, I understand.
Well, we gotta make it, we gotta make it all pretty before we can have the ribbon cutting.
Yeah, I, I'd like to go ahead and, and, and have a tour together. I, I think that would be really good. Um, and I, I think I'd like to do it uh, long before the ribbon cutting, if that's okay.
Sure. Alright, well, we will, we'll work with Ms. Matthews, and we'll get something scheduled. Alright.
I think, I think Tony will, uh, bring a, a pizza, a couple of pizzas, maybe. Maybe he'll bring some knockies.
I believe that's nokey.
You're killing me. It's gnoki, not knockie.
Yes, sir. I'm not Italian.
That's, we're well aware of that, Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh.
Alright, thank you. I, we have nothing else under new business. Unless anybody else has any new business that they'd like to raise. Hearing none, we'll move on to departmental reports. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you. Um, you likely recall that a couple of months ago, you approved a contract with the National Research Center to uh, conduct a survey as part of our water reuse initiative. I did want to share with you all that that survey is scheduled to go into the mail within the next week or two, just so if you're approached by any residents who receive it, that you're not caught off guard. Mayor and Common Council had also asked that staff periodically provide some updates on our election process, and Ms. Viskoski does have a report this evening, so Shannon, I'll turn it over to you.
Sorry about that. Nothing was working. Um, okay, so um, there will be, I just wanted to report tonight that there will be a Board of Elections meeting, uh, which will be held on Wednesday, January twenty-seventh this week. During the meeting, during the board mem, I'm sorry, during the meeting, the board members will be discussing the upcoming election. Uh, tomorrow, January twenty-sixth, and on February fourth, I will be attending a virtual election roundtable forum uh, with other municipal clerks. Um, and tomorrow, January twenty-sixth, I'm sorry. By January twenty-sixth, uh, we will be covering elections as a whole. Um, on February fourth, the forum will actually provide lessons on vote by mail, then in case it's needed during the pandemic. And um, so during the next meeting, I will provide a report on the board's meeting, as well as what I learned during the forums. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Ms. Viskoski. Um, Colston?
Good evening, Council President and Council. Uh, we are just about, or we are over the six-month mark of the year, fiscal year, as, as you know. Looking at the numbers that are in the departmental report, for the most part, we're right around the fifty percent mark. Um, most departments are actually a little bit under, so that's good. Um, other than that, it is a business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colston. Mr. Davidson?
Good afternoon. Just on a report that we did complete the phone upgrade on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Uh, starting tomorrow, we'll do the software piece of the phone upgrade, and hope to have that completed by Friday. Uh, next week, we'll start our prep for forty-five West Main, so we'll start putting in some equipment. And then we are scheduled to move our server infrastructure to forty-five West Main on February twenty-sixth. We need to uh, get that in, because we have to schedule with outside sources. So we have a February twenty-sixth, move the server infrastructure in. What will happen then? We'll backfeed our uh, old building from the new building to keep everybody up and working. That's all I have to report tonight.
And Mr. Depot?
Good evening. Um, just a quick update of upcoming meetings. The Board of Zoning Appeals will be meeting on February the second. This is a variance case for thirty-five West Moreland Street. Might sound familiar. It did go before them last month, but there was information that we needed from the applicant. We did receive that, so that should be moving forward. Uh, the Historic District Commission is going to meet on the third. Uh, this is primarily to discuss the damaged monument in the Bell Grove Square. Uh, I'm sure you're aware of that. A vehicle hit a monument. It's our understanding that it cannot be repaired and most likely being replaced. Uh, so we're just going to have some discussion about that monument, maybe a better location in Bell Grove. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission is meeting on the eleventh, and the um, uh, C F T Plaza, this is a uh, small retail center that's taking the place of the Ruby Tuesdays at Malcolm Drive and Route one forty. Uh, this is, it's about three or four tenants or suites. Uh, that should be on Planning Commission for Approval. And then I did mention the Clark Farm. There was thought we might be able to get that into this month. That is a thirty-five unit development. As you're aware, that's um, over near the Furnace Hill Development on the W T T R site. But it looks like, most likely that'll be going in March, um, if we can get it uh, in front of the Planning Commission. And that completes my report.
And Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Depot. Um, Mr. Depot, unfortunately, I, I'm actually not familiar. I don't, I don't know anything about a monument getting hit. What, what happened? If you don't mind filling us in. I, I, I'm not sure if that's within your purview or not, but regardless, I've, at first I've heard about it.
It, it's my understanding that a vehicle struck the monument. It, it's a old monument, um, that uh, I, I'm sure Mr. Dayhoff can explain this a little bit better. A place for inde- um, uh, for independence. And it's been there for a very long time. Uh, we did look at, is it, can we replace or repair it? I think the material, obviously, that was used in the day to um, to create the monument is very difficult. So again, I think we're looking at replacing the whole thing. We are getting a second opinion. Um, I'm looking more to bring it to the H D C to see, maybe there's a better location on Bell Grove Square, so this doesn't happen again. Or uh, additional security that we can put around the monument uh, to protect it a little bit better. And I'm sure Ms. Matthews can explain more. I know we're going through insurance for the cost to replace the monument. I don't know what the actual numbers are yet, and there might be other resources we can uh, obtain, because it is a historic monument. can obtain because it is a historic monument. And I can send you a little quick synopsis of what the monument represents and why it's been there.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. Councilmember Dayhoff, would you like to give a report for the Fire Department?
Yes, and before I do that, may I follow up on the monument, if that's okay?
Certainly.
The monument goes back to the first bicentennial and, what, 1876, right after the park was, was dedicated, or actually almost concurrent when the park was dedicated. There was a lot of trouble getting the park approved by the Westminster Common Council, and I think, I think the monument was, and a ceremony was a part of getting the park approved. Mr. Depot, I would love to see it moved. It's been moved before, but I would love to see it moved from that location. And then also, we had quite a time getting that light fixture replaced also as a result of that accident. If we replace that monument, I guess I don't want to lose the original monument. Maybe we could talk to the Historical Society, or maybe we can do something creative with it. But Belgro Square has a great history. Ms. Viskosky, I think, I think I'm a little behind on the, the fire company reports, and I'm not sure. I need to do a little bit of research, but I think I need to do November's report. And in, in November, we had 376 EMS calls. We had 94 fire calls. We, the total calls for November were 470. And Ms. Viskosky, I'll, Ms. Viskosky, I'll, I'll send you this report, so that'll, that'll help you out. The calls, we're still just running a couple of calls behind the previous year, and that's, that's not necessarily a bad thing. We're still dealing with a lot of overlapping calls. A lot of demand for EMS, a lot of, a lot of demands for EMS calls. For December, we had a total of 400, and yeah, 488 calls. EMS was 420 calls and fire calls were 68 calls. And it looks like we're still running about 50% of our calls are in the city. It looks like that for both months. 60, 50% are in the city and 50% outside of the, of the city. And again, in December, we have been dealing with a lot of overlapping calls. 50%, 50% of the time when you call for a medic unit in the city of Westminster, we have to call in New Windsor, Pleasant Valley, or Reese because we have that many calls. And I believe that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dayhoff. Mr. Glass?
Yes, ma'am. The only thing that I wanted to report was that Mike Zekman, Superintendent of Utility Maintenance, is retiring at the end of this month, and I didn't want that to go unnoticed. I personally want to thank him for his 34 years of service. That's all I have.
Thank you. I would echo those comments. Mike has been wonderful to work with. Ms. Gruber?
Good evening. Just to follow up on comments from Councilman Dayhoff, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board met for the second time on December 12th. Ms. Jessica Laird was named the Chairperson of the Board, and more of the discussion throughout the evening revolved around the concentration of developing a mission and a vision statement for the Board, and also different types of organizational strategies. The Board plans to meet again on Tuesday, February 9th. Additionally, the Recreation and Parks Department, this is following up on Councilwoman Gilbert's comments, we are now focused on the next public input meeting for Wakefield Valley for the master planning process. The meeting will be held, as the first meeting was virtually, and in person. Those attending in person have the opportunity to attend at 6:00 PM or 7:15 PM. This public meeting will be held at the Carroll Arts Center. A concept plan for the site will be discussed and explained by Panini and Associates. Those attending in person or virtually are invited to offer input. The public input, or the public comment period will be open from January 27th through February 3rd on this iteration of the master plan. And as always, comments can be submitted during that time to wakefieldcomments@westgov.com in the event you're not able to attend virtually or in person on Wednesday evening. And then lastly, staff have been busy working on the development of some hybrid event plans for COVID-compliant 2021 event offerings. And earlier today, I believe you were sent drafts of three plans, one for the Celtic Cantor, one for Hybrid Wine Stroll, and the other for Flower and Jazz Festival. So I wanted to provide you a little more detail about the Celtic Cantor plan this evening. And if we want to discuss, in addition to that, any of the other plans that we've submitted, all of the plans that you have before you were also sent to the Health Department. We are still awaiting comment from the Health Department. So in order to establish a safe race environment and to offload over 1,000 t-shirts that we were unable to distribute last year for the Celtic Cantor, we developed a safe race plan that is compliant with all CDC guidelines and the current governor's executive order. And essentially, one of the really great things about the Celtic Cantor is its downtown presence. But we are realistic in our plans for the 2021 event, and we realize that in order to safely hold this, we will have to space out our normal field of runners, which is around 1,000 people. That would mean having city streets closed for an excessively long period of time, and we know that that is not the reality. So the plan before you contemplates moving the Celtic Cantor to the former Wakefield Valley Golf Course, and that allows us to stay within the 250 group gathering number that's in effect currently. So we can start 200 runners every hour, beginning at 9:00 AM. We have plenty of space and plenty of parking. This will enable us to essentially, those first 200 runners that would show up to run at 9:00 AM, I've measured off, we have enough space that we can place one cone every six feet. So each runner has a physically distant spot to stand. And if you think of the mechanics of the race, almost like one of our parade lineups, they'll continue to move forward and move forward until they reach the starting line. And at that point, the chip on their bib would start their race time. They would run the 5K course, totally encompassed within the former Wakefield Valley Golf Course property, and they would cross the finish line in a totally separate area. We'd have three finish chutes established to keep runners separated in the finish chute area. Additionally, to, or in addition to that, runners would be required to keep their mask on until they started actively running. And as soon as they got to the finish chute, they would be required to put their mask back on. And we will have plenty of staff present to be monitoring and facilitating that rule, if you will, and they'll have masks on hand to handout if anyone dropped theirs on the course, or, you know, ends up in the finish chute without one or at the start line without one. So we'll be constantly monitoring people waiting to run and people finishing their run. So if anybody has any questions, one of the things that we did to protect ourselves in the event that we would be forced to cancel the event again, is we have outlined registration fees. We have a lesser registration fee if you want to have last year's t-shirt, and we have a greater registration fee if you want a brand-new 2021 shirt. And then we've also specified in that plan that you have the refund amounts. So last year, because it was completely unexpected, the city felt it was the right thing to do to refund everybody's money. This year, if you look into that plan, you'll see the refund amount specified actually would cover our per-runner cost for everything that the city would have to put into this event. So we wouldn't be out such a large sum of money this year if the pandemic worsened and we were forced to cancel. That concludes my Celtic Cantor event COVID safety plan, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Or if you'd like me to delve into some of the other plans, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Mr. President, I have, real quick.
Sure, let me, before you do that, let me just say that we asked Ms. Gruber to share these plans with you this evening. She needs to begin planning this event, you know, and get it, really getting ready for it if it's going to happen. And of course, we won't meet again for another two weeks, so I wanted to make sure that, you know, she, she did get a chance to brief the, the council tonight and, and give everybody, you know, heads up on what her plans were. And, you know, let you all know that the Health Department is looking at it, and my thought would be that, and, you know, certainly, you know, we'll hear whatever everybody else says, my thought was that absent some negative input from the Health Department, that, you know, Ms. Gruber would be allowed to go and move forward with, with the event. Mr. Cavaci?
I totally agree with you, Mr. President. That's what I was going to say, is that, you know, I think we, you know, I'd like to see us all support that, but, you know, each of us, of course, has our own opinion about it, but I certainly am supportive. But I have one caveat. And that caveat is this. I, I am sure, you know, being, being such an avid distance runner myself, being sarcastic, a lot of sarcasm in that. I'm sure that, that Wakefield Valley is probably a really great venue to hold races. I'm sure it's way better than running downtown. But I would support this with one caveat, and that caveat is that you make a commitment to us that next year it comes back downtown. Because what I fear is, is that you, that it's going to be awesome out there, and, and everybody's going to love it. But the Celtic Cantor brings, as I'm sure I don't tell you, after that race, it is a boon for our downtown businesses. And if we move that out to Wakefield permanently, it, we're just not going to have that any longer. And it's going to be, I'm sure, a great race, but it's not going to be this wonderful downtown event. So I'm just, just begging you to please make sure people understand that we're going to bring it back into downtown the following year, or at least I hope so. So that's my only comment. Thank you. Otherwise, awesome, awesome job.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Anybody else have any questions or thoughts on this? All right, let's say the mayor and I did get a chance, I said, to, to, you know, get briefed on this, and the other events as well, very thoroughly earlier today. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, you know, I was part of the, the committee meeting earlier where we went over this. But, you know, it, it's clear that they went through this and really, you know, they're doing everything we can to resume some level of normalcy in the safest manner possible. And the comment I made earlier was that, you know, I've been, I've been saying over and over again to people, like, we have to listen to the health professionals on this, the whole time, for the last 10 months. So if, you know, if they're saying that this is okay, if they're going to say this is okay, then, you know, I think we should, we should listen to them there, too. But, you know, I, it's an outdoor event. I think it's going to be done very safely, and I'm looking forward to it. Except this was the first event. We had to cancel last year. We did it at the last minute, when we knew nothing about the virus, other than it was coming our way. And, you know, I, so I think, I think, I think it's good that we will resume without spilling over into a second year of just, you know, a blanket canceling of events. So I, and I appreciate all the, you know, all the work that everyone's put into this. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, unless anybody has any thoughts of the contrary, I think, Ms. Gruber, that you're good to go on planning a, a Wakefield version of the Celtic Cantor.
Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you very much. And, you know, maybe we could get a, you know, give everybody a chance to, to read through the other events. You've got a little more time on those, and we can have some conversation about those at a future meeting and, you know, discuss any details. But, you know, once again, good job on all the planning with all three of these events.
Chief Ledwell?
Good evening, everyone. So we were able to compile our crime numbers for calendar year 2020. And this was the first year that we did include reported sex offenses as that responsibility transitioned from the Child Advocacy Center over to our detectives. Despite that, the city experienced a decrease of over 25% in Part 1 crime in 2020 as compared to 2019. The city experienced a decrease of over 23% in overall crime in 2020 as compared to 2019. The city experienced over 31% decrease in Part 1 crime as compared to 2018, and over 40% overall crime decrease as compared to 2018. Also, our detectives on Sunday morning served a search warrant at a residence of a suspect that they developed in the thefts from automobiles that had been recently occurring, and they did recover a substantial amount of evidence linking the suspect to multiple crimes. They're going to be applying for charges. It was very good investigative effort on both patrol and our, our detectives' behalf. We hired two lateral police officers, Mr. David Tatuska and Mr. Ron Rojas, who were both Maryland-certified police officers. Officer Tatuska started last week, and Officer Rojas will start on the 2nd. This will leave us with one current sworn vacancy. We do have several additional certified Maryland officers in our hiring process, as well as some entry-level applicants. We were also able to use some grant funds that we obtained for recruitment to offer Mr. Rojas a small hiring bonus for his bilingual skills. We're prepared to transition our dispatch operations to the 16-hour operation as soon as the county can complete the ORI sub-agreement with the state, and when they notify us that their new dispatchers are ready to go. We currently have two of our officers deployed with the National Guard units in Washington, DC. And I believe that's all I have for tonight, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Last but certainly not least, Ms. McCullough?
Good afternoon. Yes, the Human Resources Department, we've been busy. We had our kickoff meeting with Evergreen for our compensation plan. Several files have been uploaded to Evergreen so that they can do their work, position descriptions. We're also working with the employee data spreadsheet as well. We've had a lot of several recruitment activities going on with the Director of Housing position. The questionnaire has been sent out to the applicants, and we have received the answers back from those applicants, and we will be interviewing in February for that position. And we've also had several other advertisements that are either closing or that will be closing soon, and we will be rating and reviewing those applications as well. That's all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. And President Pecoraro, I believe that concludes staff's reports, unless there's any questions from the Mayor and Common Council.
Any additional questions for any other staff? All right, Ms. Matthews, thank you very much. And that, the final item on the agenda is citizens' comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. During these virtual meetings, we will invite comments to be sent to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. Commentators should include their address and phone number with their comments. And at this time in every meeting, I'll read out the comments we've received. And we have received no comments since the last meeting, so there's nothing to share with you tonight. But that concludes our agenda and the meeting. And with that, without objection, we adjourn. Please stay safe, everybody. Thanks very much.